I've spent the past week with township manager. Last meeting in July, we actually voted to start recording meetings. That's the little camera you see over there. So these meetings are being recorded, just letting everybody know so you're not like surprised. Technically speaking, with a public meeting like this, you know, anybody could record at any point in time, but the township thought it would be best just to do it ourselves, put it out there so that, you know, any residents have the opportunity to actually come to these meetings and see what happens here. It'll show up on YouTube. We'll have our own YouTube channel with no comments. Comments will be disabled, but then once that video is live, I'll share it to the township Facebook page. Just a brief.
Just a brief one?
Yeah.
I have rolls for all, sir.
Yeah, um, yeah, so you actually don't need to.
All right. There you go. Reports. Chief.
Uh, this is a piece of report. We're down two officers. We've had one officer out, but it's going to be for a health issue, and we lost another officer. So we did a test last Saturday. We have three applicants on it. I just want to express the urgency that we need to hire. We got currently seven guys running the road. Two of them are going to be going into the school here as soon as it starts. So we're going to be running 24/7, 365 with five guys. So there's going to be a lot of overtime where guys are going to be having to do. It's going to be a lot of burnout. Um, so I just want to press the urgency to hire. Uh, you get that in the passing pause.
What was presented in the package? Wesley.
Nothing. A little bit of excitement. I was making this, that's the, oh, yeah, things about the money.
Sounds good. I've got stuff in treasure, an engineer, and I have a book that we're proving for.
Oh, excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry, man.
No, um, yeah, no, that's fine. Um, so yeah, I'll just go through some of these reports really quickly for everybody. Um, the engineer's report I do want to actually address. Uh, the engineer submitted that report ahead of time. Um, they're obviously not here today, but it was regarding the lift station. So, uh, the lift station is on the corner of East Lake Road and Yuricoe Avenue. That's where all that construction is. Uh, so if you've not seen that previously, that's what's happening there. And what a lift station is, a lift station is essentially like a sewer pump. Um, kind of like a pump station. And what it does, it's written in the name, Lifts Sewer. Uh, so it takes it from lower elevations and pumps it up to higher elevations. Um, and you know, essentially we have three of them in Lawrence Park. Uh, and what it does is it essentially prevents sewer from flowing backward into basements. Right? That's essentially what it does. Uh, we've already replaced two of three. You guys could go see a completed lift station down at the boat launch. Uh, that's, that's what that building is behind the nets. That's a lift station, uh, or at the bottom of Cunningham Avenue, that's also a lift station. Uh, and then this is the third and final lift station that is, is being replaced. Uh, this was budgeted for and financing was secured for it, um, very long time ago. Um, you know, through the USDA. So, um, yeah, that's, that's all that is. And I just wanted to make a mention of it because there's been lots of questions about the lift station and what that construction is happening. Um, a few other things from my manager's report, just to, just to let everybody know. Um, there was an ongoing issue with lab tech and their sewer billing. Uh, that is something that, um, my office, we were able to rectify. Uh, essentially amounted to, um, you know, the underbilling. Uh, essentially the, the board commissioners have passed new sewer rates, and we were not passing those sewer rates on to lab tech. Uh, that has since been corrected, um, and then worked out with lab tech, and it should generate quite a bit of revenue for the township. Um, you know, honestly, it amounted about $120,000 annually. So, uh, that's good. And again, it's a simple, simple correction. Um, I also want to report that stamp grant funding, so stamp is S-T-M-P. Um, it's a state-run program that provides grant funding up to a 90% match, which is almost as good as you can get for a grant. Essentially, what that means is that if the township spends a dollar, the state of Pennsylvania will give us an 80% match. Um, and we were able to recover through that stamp grant $47,591 that week. Uh, so that, that was a big win for us. Um, you know, it did require a little lift, you know, on my part, but honestly, most of that was done by the commissioners. They, they went out and secured, uh, made sure that was going to happen. Um, in the past month, we had a cruise in July, complete with Santa arriving in a cruiser, uh, which was a, a great success, so you know, gave out a lot of gifts to children. You know, it really was a nice event for everybody. Uh, and we also had the national night out, um, which, you know, was a really good opportunity for our emergency services, uh, you know, for our police and our fire department to get out of the community and then, you know, get to, um, see folks in a sort of a more informed way. So, uh, really nice, really a lot of nice stuff there. Um, my report will end up being online, um, you know, eventually. Once we upload the minutes next month, but, uh, you know, that's, that's pretty much it for me.
Your motion is approved.
Re- report.
I'll make it.
I'll make motion.
All steps to.
All favor. Uh, I have. I motion pay the bills.
All taken.
All favor.
I.
I motion approve the prior minutes from 7:00, 9:25.
All taken.
All favor.
I have.
I'm going to correct.
Um, yeah, I'm sorry, you may click, right?
Here you are. Nick Nessa?
Yes. Hey, everyone. My name is Nick Nessa, and I live in 1217. As the chief, I am a concerned husband, father, homeowner, resident of Lawrence County Township. The reason I'm here tonight is called attention to initiate a 1217, so they have hung it technically. Begin at the beginning of timeline of the current situation. July 2017, I purchased 1217, known as 1217, near the next one, was vacant for five. I took upon myself to maintain the yard by moving regularly and removing the stone sidewalk to storage, which could travel to school daily. In February 2019, Tiffany Korn purchased the property at Erie County's tax auction. The property continues to be vacant for many years. I continue to maintain back with my property during her midlife. And three to 2024, five years later, Tiffany began to routine appearances at the property. She had multiple contractors working on the inside of the entire district guard maintaining her yard. At the neighbor, I attempted to resolve the situation in a civil manner. I gave her a loan note. Instead, I was met with threats, fines, and a visit from Lawrence Park Police regarding me maintaining my property line. This resulted in her leaving trash bags next to my driveway, and what I believe was her attempt to eat, trash bags. In October 2024, I realized that Tiffany had no intention of even maintaining or even intending to maintain outside of her house, nor following parts of regulations on routine trash service. I began documenting the conditions. There were some patients from October 2024. The exact dates are on the back. Code enforcement, Officer Corey, attempted to resolve the situation from township side. Don't be filed citations in October 11, 2024. On October 26, the grass moved and the bags of trash moved inside the house. On October 28, several bags of trash in large state were moved back along my driveway to re-savage her trash fence. This forced me to begin parking my vehicle down the driveway close to the road that might then bring the white, when I get outside of my car, the evil next to trash.
Go on. Back.
This is going to be down, see where the impressive.
November 19, the trash bags were relocated further down the driveway to match West parking, my vehicle. I contacted Lawrence Park PD and was referred to file an complaint with ordinances. On November 20th, 24th, Tiffany was cited for failure to maintain the exterior of her property in a clean sanitary manner. I wish I can wipe the bags of trash remaining. In March 2025, we see a large pile of trash and loose debris was piled outside of her house. I began filing a complaint with code enforcement. She decided again, here is how much I should care. All the trash will be removed on the property.
And the cremation, the fire.
Several bags of trash were appeared a month later in April. On May 10, the property line, or the property was moved and the bags of trash stacked against the porch. On May 30, 20 days later, the trash bins were appeared. On Thursday, June 8, my security cameras caught Tiffany tossing garbage trash from her yard onto my driveway, striking my vehicle. My son, Jase, who is also here tonight, was born the next day. I didn't have to be born, we did not want to pursue anything at that time. In July 27, my security cameras caught Tiffany Korn moving all the trash bags that she had kept earlier on her front porch to create her trash bins again. I spoke with the police chief regarding the situation, emailed and copied the footage. This reported to code enforcement, and additional citations were issued. As Pac 11 Day on August 10, Tiffany Korn's security cameras again, moving the trash bins all the way to the edge of my driveway, rendering it almost impossible to get in and out of vehicles in my sight. I had a vote here that picked rotten, movie food waste. That's wild work. Bad place. Tiffany's continued actions proved her deliberate will for disregard towards our township ordinances along with safety, well-being of our children. That is on both sides of her, and laws across the street. It is mine when you believe that citations are ineffective. At pack fairs, we hope that the township must take immediate corrective action to remedy this poor and unsafe situation. Personally, through drive paths still moved, nicked what her hustles from the street. All right, thank you all for your time and consideration regarding this matter. I'll be getting this busy. Um, take care as soon as possible. Then, any other questions for me? The jurors.
A thousand words.
Do you guys think he could like what he did? If you like, David, if you like those, or anything you'd say about him?
I would just throw a quick comment. I do agree with them that it's adorable, and I would recommend that we step up the enforcement and cite her every week.
We'll cite her every week.
If she's in violation, we'll cite her, and then I'll contact the DA's office from my end and see if there's anything else that we can do. Maybe the attorney can eliminate anything civil that can be done, but, uh, work on limited, what we can do as far as criminal, but I'll, I'll do whatever we can on our end of the DA's office.
And I think at this point, again, she's also, she has pled not guilty. She has pled guilty and then appealed it, and we went to court common pleas, which is, you know, there's four hours of my time right there. It's, it's just a, a game.
Mm-hmm.
And the game is over because at this point in the game, she's going to not see $100 fines per, she's going to probably see $300 per fines. So when she starts getting hit $300 a week.
Plus court costs.
Plus court costs, then maybe her attitude will change, so.
Definitely our disposal this time.
I'm writing another citation for her. I've, I've done it all done. I just have to date it and, and it is in a fairx tomorrow. Uh, I was planning on doing it today, but things got a little crazy in my, uh, my other job, so. Uh, that's the game. We're, we're going to play it. If she wants to play it, we'll play it.
Just a question. I mean, is, uh, Health Department, could they be involved or not?
We could definitely get them involved. We're going to permanently have the same type of citation that we're going to be doing.
Right.
Same type of question. Is there anything civil?
Well, and, and, and I might, you can go ahead and tell it, but I believe the township has adopted the International Property Maintenance Code, and so there are provisions you can cite under that for the trash and breathe that if they still fail to correct it, go to court and take them for civil matters for important purposes. So like, if there's just what people need to comply, um, and then you go that way. We often see it in cases of it's, you know, you have, um, a hoarding situation and you need to get it cleaned out, so we get a court board that offers us to go in and correct that. Um, but that is a process that you have to pay to do that. This is a unique situation that you have to somehow clean up, and then it's back again. And so it's just, it's going to be evaluating whether there's an opportunity to get the ability to correct the issues through the township. It would all be, the township does, uh, they get a judgment or a lien. It's leaning as to real estate.
We do criminal on our, the state of do civil on our.
And all property maintenance code violations are summary criminal. So if we want to do further enforcement to abate those, it's still happening.
Okay. And you, David.
Um, I'm on the list if needed, but I actually live directly across the street. Um, I'm 1217 at 1220 Stillen. My name's John Dently. Um, I have been in constant contact with Chuck. I actually work with him, um, constant contact with Dale and, um, State Representative Pat Harkin and the Department of Health, and they both informed me that it has to be escalated through the township, that it's, it's a, it's a local thing.
And that's what we're talking about.
So.
And in addition, maybe social services should be engaged somehow.
Not much they can do on that.
Well, maybe.
You need to sign up for some mental health issues.
I wouldn't disagree with that, that she does have a little health issue, but.
But she's capable.
It's, it's played a game.
Well, yeah.
We, Chief and I know that she's playing a game, so.
But she doesn't understand the rules, Mr. Shawn.
Turns out, she's been indicted for five times, so she knows, she, she knows the game, and she won't play it, so we have to, we have to step up our game, and we'll play it as well.
Every time you see a violation weekly, you know.
I go by it three times a week, and I take pictures.
And then it's cited weekly.
Yeah, it's cited weekly. It's, I'm not playing. If I have to go to common, court common pleas, I'll go to court common pleas.
I have a question for the solicitor, and I'm asking your question. If, if this situation becomes upon worse, so it's going to be a harmful situation to an individual or something, is there something that we can do to correct the situation, move the garbage or whatever, and place liens or whatever? You know, my concern, and I understand this, is that the legal process takes time. The law turns slowly, but I don't want to see someone get sick or hurt or whatever because of this, and.
Yeah, it would, I, what I think you would define it, it's, I mean, it depends lawyer answer, but based on what your ordinances say that you can do, you have the authority to do. Um, because it's, you can't really, I understand that it's a unfortunate situation, but you really just can't go onto someone's property to correct a violation if you don't have the authority to do that. So that's just, that's part of the common pleas route, or it might be that, you know, if you go that route, you can structure a resolution with the court such that, okay, if this continues to happen because we have documented repeat issues, then it's, we have an obligation. I think it's, you know, because the DJ can't give us out of the, they can only issue fines and penalties, unfortunately. They'd like to think they can do more, but unfortunately, you know.
Okay. All. I'm not on the list, but is there some sort of a rapid issue here?
That's something we're going to have to explore with the DA's office. Um, we have approved the intent and everything, but that's something we're going to be discussing with them as to what more we can do.
It stands to me.
But that's, that's all for summary violation.
It fixes it up, and all of a sudden it's back again. It's almost like it's a raptor.
It's the same, it's the same analogy, summary violation, so it's the same fine as what they're citing them with now.
Have they been paying the fine?
Uh, they, they.
I'm sorry?
He tells that they've been paying fine.
I don't know that.
That's something that we don't.
We're never aware of that, to be honest with you.
Going for it is insane, but that's through the judge. If they don't pay it, then it goes to a warrant, then the warrant comes to our office, and then we execute.
Yeah, people have warrants in the.
And actually, to my knowledge, I don't believe we have a warrant for them at this point.
John, do you want to come up? Charles, Lewis?
Here. I, I have a question for Commissioner Buckley. Be evaluated. What I was going to ask about, I'll agree, I come across a couple of allegations, one for criminal mischief, one for criminal trespass. I see that Mr. Buckley was a defendant. And I wanted to ask if, you know, saying the mission at time was the victim of this mischief of resident Lawrence Porter. The scene now isn't here, I don't want to question any further. I might be able to answer, it'll be fair. And then I want the other question, I think, Mr. Captain Swear, as far as fines, and try to, what are the monies picked in the last three or four years? Thank you.
You know, actually, you know, as a good opportunity just to speak to audits, um, just so everybody's aware, you know, the, the, there are, we have a series of routine audits we go through. Um, we actually got hit with three in a week. Um, you know, it's just, they have been, uh, due to our staffing changes, you know, they have been sort of backburnered. So just, just on the, on the, on the point of routine audits, um, just in this past week, we, we have undergone a sort of a workers' comp plan audit, which is an annual audit every year. Uh, our regular township audit, uh, should be getting finished up this week. Uh, that's something where the township hires a, an auditor annually to, and then in addition, this week, we also got our four-year pension audit, which is a, is a bit more of a, bit deeper of an audit. Uh, the Auditor General's office from Pennsylvania comes up to our office. They were here for an entire day this week, and, uh, you know, we worked together to facilitate their, their, their audit. It's just, again, just to speak toward the, toward some of the routine audits that, that the township, um, goes through. But, um, you know, obviously, you know, Mr. Lewis is, has, you know, expressed, you know, a need or desire to look at additional auditing, um, which, you know, certainly something we're, we're going to discuss.
See if you're, Kirk. Hello? Hello?
I'm not a resident. I'm a representative from Lawrence Park Golf Course. Um, I've been trying since January, when I filed paperwork, to see if we could get a zoning change down at the end of Lowry Road for a piece of property that Lawrence Park Golf Course has purchased along with other property from WAG Tech. And there's a property that we feel we could sell if it was rezoned. Um, again, January, I filed the paperwork with the fee that needed to be accompanied that. I've been, I've heard Chuck, he's been very helpful, but we seem to be getting nowhere with the price. So I just thought I'd stop in and see if there is anything we can do to expedite this at all. There is tax dollars, too many gains, too much to your, um, township. If we can get this thing approved, it's a very valuable piece of property, and it's just sitting there, and we can't sell it, but you can't get any help. So just kind of curious where we might be, or if there's something more we can do.
True. Um, so I am aware of the rezoning request. It has come through my office, and we have reviewed it. Um, because there are certain procedural requirements you have to follow for units of county planning that are ordinances. Um, it was referred to county planning for their review, which is part of the process. County planning did provide commentary that the requested rezoning is not consistent with our comprehensive plan for the township.
Where you design.
Um, the township has adopted jointly with Wesleyville, I believe, several.
2004.
2004, so it's dated. But there's a comprehensive plan, so it's what this township wants to see for the future of, for the borough, like what their area looks like. So where that particular property is located is still conservation, I think conservation. And so the rezonement to residential would mean it is inconsistent with what we have already identified as keeping that as conservation. So that was one comment that the county had. Doesn't mean you can't rezonate, but rezoning is a purely legislative determination by the board. Um, so that was county planning comment. So the extent the rezoning is granted, then the content is not consistent. You would have to amend the comp plan. But it goes to county planning review, and then it also goes to the township planning commission for review. Um, my understanding is that has occurred.
Yeah.
And they, the planning commission from the township level is a recommending body. So they review the requests, evaluate it, and make their recommendation to the board commissioners. And then there is a public hearing that would be held after the receipt of that recommendation with the board commissioners to consider whether or not to grant or deny the rezoning. Um, and so I think the planning committee has pleased with that.
Yeah, the, the planning commission met, um, you know, it was a topic of discussion, and I would say that, you know, I, I don't have the official, I don't have the planning commission to report from in front of me. Um, so all I can say is that the planning commission met, and I think it was, I don't, forgive me, I don't know the dates, um, you know, but it gets like, I think it's the first Tuesday of the month, so it would have been, or it was last Tuesday, the first Tuesday of August. Um, so, uh, the planning commission met, they were not expressly against the idea. They just had some concerns that they wanted the commissioners to be aware of, and mostly those concerns regarded were, were around the comprehensive plan that, that our solicitor just mentioned. So essentially, um, yeah, another way to think about these comprehensive plans is they're kind of like guidelines for how the, how the township is going to operate and how we want to see it operate. And in that comprehensive plan, we said this land should be conservation land until we get a new comprehensive plan. And, um, one of the things I'm going to be discussing, I don't want to jump ahead and agenda, but we're going to be discussing a new comprehensive plan for us. Uh, I do not believe that a, to resolve this issue, we will have to wait for a new comprehensive plan. That, that is not, we won't need to do that. We just needed to move this along essentially, uh, and unfortunately, for many reasons, it wasn't moving along. Um, you know, I, I made sure it was in front of the planning commission last time they met. We need to get the zoning board together. They meet on an ad hoc basis, so, and it's only three people. Uh, but I, we're planning to get them together so they can make a recommendation, and then hopefully, you know, I can then actually bring it to the front of the board for them to vote on whether or not, um, they want to resell the parcel. I, I, you know, I apologize it's taken as long as it's taken. Um, you know, I, I can only offer you excuses, which I'm not proud of. You know, uh, those excuses range, you know, everywhere from lack of staffing to lack of understanding, right? And, uh, you know, but at this point, um, I would say that, uh, at least my office understands what, what you all need, um, and wants to at least move forward to, so that the board can render their decision. Um, I think that there was just, uh, a lot of delays, and then government works slow, which is not a great answer, but it's the best one I have.
So what you're saying is it's been presented to the one party?
It's been presented to the county planning agency, if their recommendation. It's been presented to the township's planning commission for their review and recommendation.
Um, has that been approved, or?
Uh, they make a recommendation. They don't make a rule or denial, they make a recommendation.
Yeah.
Um, I would have to confirm, but I don't believe the zoning hearing board needs to review this.
I, if, if, I, if that's.
That's, I don't think.
You'd have to look, you know, I thought they did. If they don't, that, that makes this easier.
But the zoning hearing board typically doesn't review, but it might be different here. Um, but then if, after the planning commission reviews and recommends, and assuming the zoning hearing board doesn't have to, then there would need to be advertised a public hearing before the commissioners, for the commissioners to have a, review the petition requesting rezoning, and to then take a vote to rezonate or not rezonate. Um, it's a purely legislative decision on the part of the board to rezone.
Right.
Um, so it's really up to them whether or not they want to do that.
So where would you say this is at right now?
Assuming no zoning hearing board is. Assuming no zoning hearing board is required, then we would need to, or with advertising a public hearing. And that's twice a week for two successive weeks, so I guess the earliest it would be is.
I mean.
The August week, where you, yeah, it's, it's the August week.
Yeah, the early, essentially the earliest we could have the actual hearing and render a decision for you on whether or not it was rezoned would be our September. That is, that is the absolute earliest we can do at this point. You know, going through these steps, you know, like I said, all I have are excuses that aren't great, you know. Working for the township at the time, you know, and essentially, this, this issue needed to be presented to all of these different bodies and it just hadn't been, and it has now. And like I said, we can't move it along, but the earliest I can actually, you know, foresee a determination we are to come forward.
Which this is important.
This is important.
So if I want to come back and find out where it's at, at that point in time, if I haven't heard anything, that would be one to come back and.
Well, at the park, you know, the Lawrence Park Golf, whoever the auditioners would get notice that we're having a hearing. So we'll be sending you a letter that says, hey, we're having a hearing on X date. Usually the applicant or the auditioner show up and say, here's what we would like to do and why we'd like to do it. So you would get notes of that.
Okay, so that would be nailed to Lawrence Park. I'm just on the committee.
Yes, whoever the applicant's address is, if we were to contact, that would be who it would go to.
Okay, so they should be on the lookout for that.
Yes.
For that, no, or had someone from that board maybe hear, oh, it's, it's like that.
Yeah, and just, just to clear the air, no, you didn't call, so it's time. And I, it, it wasn't, I didn't want to call you back until I have an actual answer for you. I didn't have actual answers for you until literally this, this week, so obviously, you know.
Well, that's okay, because I'm the one who volunteered to do this in January and people keep asking me and I just don't even have an answer for it.
No, I know, and, and, you know, and I, like I said, you know, apologize for all the delays and hopefully we can just move this thing forward. You know, again, one way or the other, you know, us moving it forward is not a guarantee that the board votes for it, but at least we can get it to a point where the vote happens.
Right. Okay, I appreciate that much. I'll have them look for that letter and then hopefully see him.
And big personal problem, happy to explain the reason.
Okay, and I'm getting a whole review case, I can play you.
Um, I don't open contact information online, but I can give you part.
I think you're, I think you're a contact.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
The old business?
Um, yeah, so there's some old business, I just wanted to talk briefly about the old business and then, you know, we'll move to the motion there. The steering committee, we talked about it last week, if you were here. Steering committee is regarding the police regionalization initiative. This was something that came out of joint sessions with Wesleyville. Essentially, to explain again briefly what a steering committee is, steering committee is literally just a body of folks. In this case, it's five individuals from Lawrence Park, five individuals from Wesleyville. They will meet regularly to essentially read the state of Pennsylvania's recommendations. The state of Pennsylvania essentially made various recommendations on whether or not police regionalization would be essentially established with a new police department. You know, and sort of Lawrence Park and Wesleyville individual police departments combining, right? The steering committee is just to discuss it. That is the point of it. It is not, we, you know, I know there's a narrative that steering committees were something else, that's not true. What a steering committee is, is very simply a group of people that get together to breathe and discuss what they want to see, how they want this issue to, to proceed. You know, and again, whether you like the idea or not, right? It's, it's our opportunity to voice that opinion, that is what this committee is for. And so, you know, the standing members, you know, and these, this is based on the state of Pennsylvania's recommendations. They recommended that we have elected, elected officials, a representative from the police department, a representative from the township as employment and another, they wanted another sort of public facing official from, from the, in the area. And so out of that came Chief, Chief Morrell, Commissioner Rodmacher. Commissioner Buckley has volunteered for them as well, he's absent tonight. I would be on that committee as well. And then Iroquois School District Board Member Jennifer Chelton would be on that committee. There are several alternates for that committee that do appear. Does anyone express their interest to me to be on that committee? We are allowed to have any alternate as we want. So any folk that, that express their interests to me in being an alternate are listed.
Well, excuse me.
Yes.
I did.
I'm sorry, I, it's, I, let me, let me get your name, I'll amend the, the agenda, after the fact.
That's fine.
I'll get all in contact, so I'm sorry.
It's all right, I just, I let, no.
Yep. Um, yeah, so, yeah. So, uh, you guys, so essentially we would, you know, we'd have a motion to establish our, our members of that.
I vote yes.
I just want to bring your attention, Frank Mustard no longer lives in our area, he moved out of, out of Valley.
Oh, that's.
He no longer is, I just want to bring that to attention for you, mother.
Yep. So there would be two amendments, Mr. Mustard would need to be removed as an alternate.
I motion to, uh.
So. Number nine, yeah.
Establishes. All favor?
Aye.
Your business?
Okay, I have a lot of stuff to talk about, and I've already been talking a lot, so I apologize, I'll try to go, I'll try to go pretty quick for everybody here. First thing I wanted to talk about here is a program called Savvy Citizen. I do not know if any folks out there are familiar with it, this is, Carver Creek uses it as does Wesleyville. And in fact, there are, you know, anybody who has additional questions, I have some literature up here, but there are many municipalities in, in, in our area that use this program already. You know, that includes Northeast, that includes Summit Township, Green Township, you know, there are, again, there are, I believe there's Set fourteen, which is, which is bang near all of them. What Savvy Citizen is, is it's essentially an app. It's also an online program that allows the township to communicate more actively with residents. It operates in many ways that like newsletters used to. I am still actively pursuing paper newsletters, but Savvy Citizen is a really nice way to integrate things like social media, to integrate website email alerts. And in fact, this program, because it has nationwide acclaim, they've, they've been able to add, you know, things like, like amber alerts and then the natural weather service alerts, those would also come through Savvy Citizen, even for yours local geographic area. Folks would be able to sign up for it. And then, you know, again, you, you can choose to use it however you want. It can send texts, it is a, an app, it can send notifications to you, it can purely reach your website or email. It also provides the township with the opportunity to be in better, better contact with residents. You know, essentially for the government to push out information to residents, you know, in a way that is super transparent, super obvious, it's memorialized and definitely, it's not subject to, you know, a lot of the things that happen on Facebook, you know, with, you know, commenting and such, where you may have somebody who does not even live in the area, you know, sort of taking over your posts, right? You know, Savvy Citizen is, is an official government help, right? And it's not to say we wouldn't continue to do Facebook, my plan would be, in, in fact, Savvy Citizen integrates directly with any social media we use. So essentially, if I were to publish something to this program, it would publish to all of their social media that the township operates, right? So that's where it is, I, I am, you know, essentially, you know, presenting it to the board just for their consideration and talking up to that. You guys, are there any questions for anybody?
I expand upon that.
Yeah, please.
If they were to do this, the police department would also use this, if we have a road closure, we have a major issue, we have emergency. I can let Mr. Caddis know and he can put out an alert as well, so the police department would use it as well to keep people advised of what's going on in the community. If we have a situation that we, people stay away from, or an accident, an intersection closed or whatever, this would be utilized by us as well.
Yeah, it is, it's a good, it's a, it's a good program, it also allows you to schedule, send different information. So for example, if we knew we had an event coming up, I wouldn't want to, you know, if I'm thinking about eleven o'clock at night, I wouldn't mind if it's phone buzzing at eleven o'clock at night. It gives you the opportunity to essentially schedule in advance as far as you want. So it has a built-in calendar function, we can add our, our, whatever we are doing as a township, or whatever the school is doing, or, you know, whatever any other community event is happening, could be added to this calendar and then, you know, those alerts would come automatically. You essentially, phone your buzz or your, you know, email, and you know, you'd be alerted to wherever that event is. Really, this is kind of, in my personal opinion, and as the township manager, it's, it's the way most communities in Pennsylvania and honestly throughout the country are going. This company has, they're, they're, they're kind of the best at what they now to be fully transparent, it's not free. It is not free, so it does have a subscription cost, it is not super cheap, I believe I have it in here. And so this, this is something that obviously we've not had it before, we don't have to have it now. It was something that I thought we had a discussion, I believe it's a hundred and seventy dollars a month, okay? So it's a hundred and seventy bucks a month, you know, and essentially that gives us the capability to communicate with our residents on a very regular, you know, regular basis from a very sort of transparent place. And could be very valuable and useful to the township, but again, it's just a consideration.
Spencer, is there a discount, like you can pay it yearly?
Yeah, there is, as a matter of fact, there's a discount, you get one more dollar. So, so they, you save a hundred and seventy bucks. You also get a discount because Wesleyville hardly, so we have a usual discount. They get a discount and then we would also get that discount because those, those communities recommend it. You know, again, this is something that our neighboring communities, very regularly, if you were to go to Harbor Beach's website right now, there's a calendar on there. That calendar is powered by Savvy Citizen, that's, that is a Savvy Citizen product that we use. And then it's the same thing with Wesleyville, you go over to their website, there's a sort of calendar page on there, it's the same thing. Also, any township alerts that pop up, or Harbor Beach's alerts that pop up, that is all done through that Savvy Citizen program, that is how they do it. So, you know, again, our main goal here is simply to, you know, discuss ways that the township can, can essentially be in the same place as far as communication with our, our neighbors.
I'll make a motion to proceed. So, I think that, all favor?
Aye. Um, so next thing I wanted to discuss with everybody. And next thing I want to discuss is our payroll practices. There are several issues I've identified in the past six weeks of working here, one of our primary issues is with our payroll provider. We had our, we had in-house accounting in the past, after, you know, the renovations, we, we hired and outsourced. But I, I'm going to essentially strongly recommend, again, in terms of modernization efforts, that the township consider moving to ECCA Payroll Plus. ECCA is a payroll provider located here in Erie, if you're unfamiliar with this company. They are the payroll provider for the county, so every county employee, their payroll is done by ECCA. They're the payroll provider for Country Fair, all of them. They're the payroll provider for the prison systems, they're the payroll provider for multiple municipalities and multiple police departments. Essentially, in this geographic area, they, they are the most reputable outfit, right, for a municipal government. Because we've had payroll and accounting errors in the past, I'm essentially strongly recommending that the, the board consider pursuing hiring ECCA to become our payroll provider.
I'll make a motion. All favor?
Aye. Okay, next one is again, talking about that cleanup process, talking about essentially cleaning up our practices. One of the other issues I've identified in the past six weeks is a, is a stark need for outside accounting support. We, again, we had in-house accounting, but then since April, during, during our vote design, we've not had any accounting. There are multiple accounting issues that again, it's how he has to do, not necessarily being able to report to his citizens what we are doing with the money. And without an accountant, to do that, you know, it is extremely difficult, right? It falls on folks who are not CPAs to do. And so one, one thing I will say, we will be discussing later, it's accounting services. Outsourced accounting services, though they can be extremely expensive, are actually covered by our standard. So ninety percent of the fee is covered, okay? So even though outside accounting, I, I am currently looking at a company called BookMinders. BookMinders has over five hundred municipal contracts in Pennsylvania, okay? So they are a, a large-scale accounting provider throughout the state for municipal governments, that is sort of their bread and butter. They have over six hundred CPAs employed. Now, the, the major issue with them is that they are expensive. They, they amount, their services amount to about three thousand dollars a month, estimated.
Wow.
But like I said, we can actually receive state of Pennsylvania grant funding, ninety percent, which means the township would only have to pay three hundred dollars a month for this service. And so I am going to, again, strongly recommend that the township undertake outsourcing accounting to, to this company. Any, any questions? Anybody? Very happy to.
I'll make a motion, Steve?
Okay.
All second. All favor?
Aye.
A motion to hire Keva Cat, how do you say it?
Catseye.
Catseye, Township Administrative Generalist.
All second.
All favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to appoint Keva Catseye, Alter, Alternate Open Records Officer. A motion.
With a second.
All favor?
Aye.
Motion to reestablish township safety committee and to seek new membership.
Just to speak on that really briefly, just to know, I'm not sure many folks understand, know that we have a township safety committee. That, that is, essentially is a, it's a body that meets, that talks about any public safety issues, you know. We will be shortly soliciting membership, it's, it's not a frequent application, I think they were meeting quarterly in the past, which is probably what, or as needed. So it was quarterly or if there was an incident, right? So something just for everybody to be aware of, that's something that you're hearing about, saying, thinking, you know, public safety is important to me. You know, we, like I said, will be soliciting, soliciting members for that.
Be established? Did you vote for it?
I didn't hear, sorry.
I have a motion to reestablish the township safety committee.
You'll make a motion.
All second.
All favor?
Aye.
A motion to authorize the township manager to negotiate with National Fuel Gas regarding point zero three acre parcel and return financial agreement for approval.
I found that, really briefly, I'm sorry, it's obviously a bunch of feel bad, but just want to make sure everybody is on the same page. National Fuel would like to offload a parcel of land. If you're on Joliet and East Lake Road, there's a little cinder block building there, there, there's like a park there, right, can you picture that? And then in that park, adjacent to it, is a small cinder block building. That cinder block building used to house a, what do you call it, it's like a station for National Fuel, essentially. It's like an area where they, I don't know what it does, I don't want to speak out of turn, I don't know what it does. What I do know is they took the station out, they removed all the gas equipment, they left the building and they do not want the land. So they, they have offered it to us for sale, but based on past precedent, it may be negotiated for much, much lower, if not three or the other. I was simply looking for authorization to negotiate.
Excuse me, Spencer?
Yes.
I had a resident call me who lives adjacent to that.
Yeah.
And had most recently bought the house, I want to say in the past less than a handful of years. He called me last week and asked me about that very same thing, he said National Fuel wants to return that property to me.
They, they sent me a letter.
I said, I don't think about that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure either, this is what I got from National Fuel, I, I, yeah, I got a letter that's mentioning that parcel, mentioning the fair market value and then offering it to, to. uh, and then, um, offering it to, to, uh, the township to purchase.
Yeah, he said the previous owner had said, there's something with the gas company and this little plant. Go ahead, Joe.
We've been in communication with them for several years now. The project was delayed by National Fuel, and I believe it was planned to be done last summer.
Okay.
But we have been in communication with them to get to this point for probably forty years now. But us, we're visiting.
Okay, well, I'm gonna pass it on to you wholeheartedly, Spencer.
Sure, that's fine. Uh, yeah, uh, not, not a problem.
What's your fair market value?
Uh, yeah, I'll tell you. Um, it's a point zero three acre, uh, piece of par, property. They offered it to us for sale for three thousand one hundred and ninety-six dollars. Um, but again, uh, based on past precedent, there is, there is an opportunity for the township to, to negotiate that, you know, even lower.
Sounds about the size of a garage.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's pretty small. It is, uh, it's not, it's not a large parcel at all.
So it would only really be valuable to the person that lives in that house, right? I don't even know if it would really have to be valued enough, to be honest.
Uh, honestly, it.
If it curves around like this, that guy lives in the corner, and that little property is spread off that corner, is. Is it a, is it property? I believe it does, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's township property and then.
Right.
Uh, one private property, which is occurring, that's been in contact with.
Yeah.
Again, I'm, I'm simply coming off of what National Fuel has, uh, has sent us. Yeah.
I'll motion all ready to come to the man for to negotiate.
All second. All favor. Aye.
Um, okay, next thing, uh, you'll, you'll all see if you're following along. This is motions number B five. Um, it's about a non-urgent public safety response procedure. This is, this is like, uh, essentially, we, we had a lot of incidents, right? I, I think, like, folks are all aware that, you know, a bunch of our, uh, lights get hit, our traffic lights, our traffic signals, they're hit by, uh, and we had three get hit in like eleven days. Um, and they, it's, it, the one on Rankin and Iroquois especially bad, it's, it's totally destroyed. And, uh, you know, essentially, when, when an incident like that happens, I think everyone understands that, you know, by default, um, those intersections go alternative four ways, et cetera, but we also needed, uh, a procedure, love, internally, for how we're gonna handle it, who we call. So that's, all that's about. It's not for, um, actual emergencies where our police and fire department are trained to respond to those, uh, you know, by their, uh, you know, training and, and, uh, higher authority. This is for, uh, essentially, again, I'm calling them non-urgent public safety issues. Uh, you know, a traffic light goes out, or maybe a tree falls down and nobody is injured, but the township does need to respond in some way.
No, basically, the protocols are.
Yeah, exactly.
They're kind of protocols for these situations because that fell through us, it's like, what can we do?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Exactly, and it's really just about clarity and, and, uh, making sure everybody understands from our police, to our commissioners, to our, uh, staff, what, what their role is in, in something like that.
Make motions and implement this, 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 uh, township on urgent public safety laws. I'll see. Uh, I'll second. All favor.
Aye. Um, next thing, uh, is, uh, is, uh, just regarding some policies, uh, so, in the, that are currently outlying. But it, these, these covers are within compliance areas. It's not very exciting. Uh, essentially, um, I am looking to implement rules for township staff in the administrative office, in my office, that we are subject to certain guidelines with regards to the use of sort of media, with regards to use of password sharing, with regards to use of cell phones, um, you know, and, uh, what, what our policy should be, and making sure that we are, um, you know, again, saving records that, um, uh, because, because again, anytime the township, I think everybody understands this, anytime the township is communicating to you via Facebook or via email, that is an official government communication, and, uh, we can't be in a situation and we, what, um, we lose those records. Because as soon as we send them out, they become official records, uh, and we, we have a duty to, to keep those. So, um, looking to establish internal policies to just make sure that, uh, everybody, um, can, uh, uh, are involved.
I'll make a motion to implement a fair policy. Okay.
All favor. Aye. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash four, healthcare stipend policy clarification. This resolution acknowledges the township's historic but informational policy of offering one thousand monthly stipend to non-uniformed employees who decline township provided health insurance. One employee currently receives the stipend will be grandfathered in until the new personnel policies are adopted. The township manager, though eligible, has declined the stipend and requests this to be reported. That's a whole, whole ball?
Yeah, it's only three, if I don't have to.
Aye. 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 Resolution twenty twenty-five dash five, Strategic Management Planning Program Grant Application. This resolution authorizes the township manager to apply for Pennsylvania DCED Strategic Management Planning Program, which provides nine percent reimbursement. Projects include multi-year financial management support, a joint comprehensive plan with Wesleyville Borough, and the technology upgrades the township commits to the ten percent required match.
I, I was just, I was just talking that really quick. That's the grant I was talking about earlier, and it's referred to as STAMP, uh, Strategic Management Planning. Um, it, it's, it is that ninety percent matching grant. Uh, what, in order for me to even apply for that grant, I have to have a resolution. So that, that is what that is. The resolution is seeking that accounting funding, which I, I already mentioned to everybody. Uh, it's also seeking to support for a comprehensive plan, to update that comprehensive plan that we had talked about earlier today. Uh, and it's also seeking support to change, uh, some of our audiovisual equipment, including our audiovisual equipment, uh, in our police department, which is significantly outdated and was, uh, cited by DCED and by a third-party, uh, um, third-party partner, uh, that essentially said, this equipment is, uh, is so good. It's not doing the township any good. Uh, essentially, it's actually opening up us up to liabilities, um, when we have outdated equipment like that, and, you know, we have folks in our, our, our police station, um, you know, uh, we, we can't really afford for it to not work properly. So, that, uh, those, those are some of my requests with stamp funding, and then again, I can't submit the grant application without, uh, without a resolution.
Whole ball? Aye. Aye. All right. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash six, Updating Authorized Check Sign. This resolution updates authorized signatures for the township accounts of Northwest Savings Bank and the Pligate Account. Will include the township manager, treasurer, and three named commissioners. Two authorized signatures are required for all transactions.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash seven, Right-to-Know Policy Adoption. This ordinance, I'm also, yeah, this resolution adopts a township right-to-know policy pursuant to the section five oh four of Pennsylvania's Right-to-Know law. The policy will be posted on the township's website and made available to the public, establishing procedures for requesting public record.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Um, yeah, so at this point, uh, the board of commissioners, uh, and myself as well, their solicitor, are going to, uh, hold a brief executive session. Uh, we need to discuss a personnel matter and to receive legal advice from our town to solicitor. Uh, I want to sort of express and be informed that there will not be unofficial action taken during the executive session. Uh, and our intention is to come back after the executive session and deliver a public, uh, report on any proceedings. And if there is any resulting action, we would follow it after the session. Um, so.
Spencer, I, uh, just address one thing.
Yes.
Um, as you know, Saturday, uh, Civil Service Commission, we administered the test for police officers. Um, typically, what we've done in the past has been, you know, we've tested usually, you know, ten, twelve people sometimes. You know, this time, we only had four applicants. Of the four applicants, three of them passed all the testing. Uh, we're in the process right now of doing the background investigations. Once those are complete, we'll submit, uh, a list to the township to consider for hiring. My suggestion would be, and this is just personally, this is my personal observation from doing this for twenty-six years, um, it is very difficult to find police officers. And if you dig around a little bit, you know, uh, during COVID, we had some problems, but, you know, you would expect that to have been the case, but, um, my suggestion would be to consider hiring two people. Because you may not be able to find anybody. If you hire one, and down the road, we may need another person, there might, may not be anybody. Because the same day we tested, my understanding is Northeast tested, they had two people apply. Uh, I know Cory's tested a couple of times in the past year, and they had no applicants at all. And then, of course, there's the big consortium where there's twenty-two municipalities. They only end up with about fifty candidates for twenty-two municipalities. So, police officers are very, very short supply. So if we have the opportunity to hire two people, it might be something to consider. Because you could always lay somebody off down the road, but down the road, you may not be able to hire another person. So just my suggestion. And if you look up, and I, I did some investigating throughout the state, number of municipalities have dropped the age to eighteen. Our age is twenty-one. We make sure that you have to have Act one twenty, the municipal police officer training. A lot of municipalities have dropped that. They will actually hire you, let you go and get the training, and then go to work. Some of them will actually pay for you to go take the training. That's how desperate it is getting. Some are offering, uh, a stipend, you know, a signing bonus type thing, you know? So they're, you know, it's getting, it's getting to be very difficult. So just something to consider, if you have willing applicants, you may want to hire two. So just my personal opinion, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, yes, and we will be, um, you know, back shortly, uh, maybe early from, from, uh, the executive session. Yeah, just to, just to give a, uh, again, let's, let's discuss the executive session. Um, you know, not, not a whole lot we can say, but what we can say is that, uh, we, we're discussing personnel matters directly related to the, uh, staff transition, uh, you know, back in April and, uh, you know, current staff transition, what we're taking over, uh, and how we're going to proceed, uh, before we, this issue. Um, that's, that's about all I can say right now. Um, and so I apologize for keeping you waiting if you thought you were gonna get something, uh, really, really, uh, cool and interesting. Uh, not, not a whole lot to say there. Um, yeah.
I have a motion to adjournance, stand twenty-four. Oh, sorry, all favor. Aye.